Good evening, everybody. Before we begin, I'd like us to remember a member of our community who recently passed away. David Knight, a proud lifelong native of Newburyport, died at his home on December 24th. David waged a fierce battle against a rare form of Parkinson's disease known as progressive supranuclear palsy. He faced his diagnosis with courage and determination. David had graduated from Newburyport High School in 1969, later earning his bachelor's degree from Southern New Hampshire University. He was a gifted athlete. He served on the Newburyport Police Department for 25 years. And as an athlete, he was proud of his medal from the 1998 Massachusetts Law Enforcement Games, winning the title of toughest cop alive. David was a veteran, serving in the Air Force during Vietnam, president of the local police union, and retired as the city's school resource officer, a position he genuinely loved. And he returned to the Newburyport school system as a substitute teacher for several years after his initial retirement. He leaves behind many family members, his wife, son, and daughters, and we offer our condolences to his family. Thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We will do a little bit of belt and suspenders here with the clerk will call the roll. We did call this meeting originally at 6:30, had a half-hour executive session, and now we're resuming our regular meeting. So the clerk, if you could please call the roll.
We'll call for the regular meeting starting a little after 7:00 PM. Counselor Khan.
Present.
Counselor Lane.
Here.
Counselor McCauley.
Here.
Counselor Preston.
Here.
Counselor Shan.
Present.
Counselor Wright.
Here.
Counselor Z.
Here.
Counselor Dunne.
Present.
Counselor Granis.
Here.
Counselor Hyman.
Here.
And Counselor Cameron.
Here.
All present.
Late files.
I'm pleased to inform all there are no late files.
So on. Public comment. And we will take public comment also from online. If somebody out there wants to raise their hand, they could speak for matter on the agenda. If you're a Newburyport resident, up to two minutes, and we'll start in person first. Commissioner Clark, Jane Snow. Which one? Let's take this.
First, before I forget, happy holidays to all of you, and I hope you have an enjoyable one and a healthy, happy, prosperous new year. Okay, now the other side. Okay, so I'm standing up to speak against ordinance 178, the Affordable Housing Property Tax Exemption. And I really kind of hate doing this, but I look at it and it bothers me that this was just recently passed in July. Only one community has used it, and any funds that we need, which we estimated at $150,000, has to come out of the budget. It can't come and be added on to the tax bill. And that really makes me nervous. And the other thing that I think is a big mistake is writing this and putting it forward to help one particular organization. And they're a wonderful organization, I don't deny that. We have helped them in the past. We gave them $200,000 on the last project to help them finish it, and that accommodated 10 residents. I am not denying that they do an excellent job, but I don't think that this is the way to go. I think that there has to be, you know, matching funds for them in terms of the rent and so forth and so on. I just think that this is a bad precedent, because what are we going to do if we have another group that comes in and says the same thing? And it was very clear from the meeting, we're not 100% sure who will and will not qualify for this. They identified six and narrowed it down, but still, it's kind of out there floating. So I really wish we would hold off on this and get some more research and then put it forward. It's not anything against the people that are wanting, that need it, it's just, I don't think it's, I just am very uncomfortable with the way it's going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no online comment, our hands raised. We will go to the mayor's comment.
You guys are really going to make up on this 15 minutes, which is great. I'm just going to be really brief. First, I wanted to mention, just, this is, this just happened this weekend, but with deep sadness that I share that one of our greeters here at City Hall passed away this weekend, Paula Monk. Paula was just working in City Hall this past fall and finished up her hours just a few weeks ago, actually, and she just tragically passed away this weekend. She was traveling. So just obviously, our thoughts are with her family during this difficult time, but you know, obviously thank her for all her help here at City Hall. I want to remind all of you that we have the Brown School Information Session tomorrow night upstairs here at 7:00 PM. I hope you all can make it. I think you guys are going to be really excited where we're landing with this project. The negotiations have gone really well so far. We're looking forward to sharing some of that information tomorrow night. I wanted to give you a quick update on just some active projects that we have to shut down here because the temps just aren't going to warm up, and these things have to happen in warmer weather. So, you know, we've done, had some really great progress on the Knott Tennis Courts, Lower Atkinson Parking Safety Project. Those are now tied up, and they'll start back up in the spring. And also our street work, where we did not finish the final coat on Eagle and Middle Streets. That'll be the first thing that we do come spring, and then we'll get to Noble Street, Counselor Lane. And then also, you know, you guys also just passed that crosswalk safety ordinance, so that painting that comes with that has to be done in warmer temperatures. So unfortunately, we can't do that until it warms up a little bit in the spring, but we'll look forward to doing that right away as soon as the weather allows us. I have Market Landing Park ad hoc down here. I know that first meeting is tomorrow night. I think we'll learn a little bit more about really what's going to happen with that tomorrow, so I guess I'll leave that for then. Chief of Staff appointment, I think I sent a message out to all of you. Christian Seer starts on January 6th. We're really excited to have Christian get started. We had over 50 people apply, which was really incredible, and we had 12 people go through a first interview, and then we had four finalists, and you know, Christian really rose to the top, and so I'm really excited. He's got a great background, and he's from Newburyport, so he loves it almost as much as I do. And you know, we're excited to get to work here in 2025. And then finally, just happy holidays. You know, whatever you celebrate, I hope you get to enjoy some downtime with friends and family. I know I'm certainly going to look forward to that. I said that during Thanksgiving, but I'm even saying it more so now that we're almost here, and again, just enjoy. And that's it from me.
Any questions or comments to the mayor? Counselor Harmon.
Thank you. Just curious, with the streets and sidewalks kind of coming to a close for the season, do you anticipate an update to the five-year plan, the, you know, things that got done that were supposed to get done, things that didn't, things that got added to the list?
Yeah, it shouldn't affect the plan, so it'll just, it'll just move some of the things like Eagle and Middle Street to the top next year. Like I said, we're starting with Noble, which had already got pushed back, so we'll start that way. But it shouldn't affect, they're preparing to do all the work that's already listed on the plan right now, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Have a great meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. That would lead us to the consent agenda.
The consent agenda this evening consists of the approval of the minutes for November 25th. There are three communications. Communication 603, ADU Planning Board Report Final, that's to go to PND and Committee of the Whole. Application 237, Secondhand Auto License for State Automotive, that's to go to license and permits. Likewise, application 238, Secondhand License for Plum Auto Works, again, license and permits. One transfer, 207, School Department, $159,000 with respect to the NHS Water Heater Replacement coming from NHS Elevators and from the General Fund, free cash. That's to go to Budget and Finance. There are no appointments. The following items are coming out of the respective committees, Budget and Finance. Ordinances 180, 181, 182, Transfer 205, and Order 640, General Government Order 638, License and Permits, Application 236, Order 644, Public Works and Safety Orders 639, 624, Ordinances 188, 189, and that is the consent agenda this evening.
Motion approved.
Second.
Okay. You can do a voice vote.
We can.
That's going to save some serious time. All right, all those in favor of approving or accepting the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, thank you. Motion received and filed in the Mary's House.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Thank you. That will lead us to the regular agenda.
First reading of appointments. The Appointment 524, Andrew Shapiro, 20 Eagle Street, to the Affordable Housing Trust until 1-1, 2027. And Appointment 525, Suzanne Cameron, 17 Hancock Street, Affordable Housing Trust until 2-1, 2027.
Counselor McCauley has his hand up, and I'm going to recuse myself on the second of those. Counselor McCauley?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to send both of these to PND.
I'm just going to step out of the room. Counselor Z, do you mind jumping in? I just... Thank you.
Got it.
All right, I think I heard a motion to refer to planning. Was there a second?
Second.
Hey, motion.
Yeah, we've had a lot of talk about affordable housing in the community, and the trust actually has a lot of money, and I think it's, it'll be apropos to continue the conversation that we're having on affordable housing. And, you know, this is two of the five members that are on there right now, coming in at the same time, and I just think that have it, continuing the conversation, they're, you know, credible people, reappointments, et cetera, have a long history of that, but I just think it's, it would be helpful if we continued that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Other counselors wishing to speak on the motion? Counselor Khan?
Yeah, just thank you, Council interim president chair. Just wanted also, I know we talked about appointments and some of those that actually are dictated to go to certain committees. Can folks remind me, and maybe I'm looking at the chair of Planning and Development, does this particular role go to Planning and Development?
Well, affordable, sorry, affordable housing does, but this is not one of those specific ones that's, ZBA and Planning and Planning Board are the ones that definitely go, that we do the public hearings for, but affordable housing is not one of them.
And the Historic?
And Historic Commission.
So those three are the ones that go. My other point, and I definitely hear, I think a lot of us feel like, you know, we've talked about trying to streamline, where does it make sense for committees to have appointments discussed? But the other thing I do want to also kind of highlight is, I don't think we could pick and choose. So one of the things I am going to ask is, given that we do these readings, we do the first reading, the second reading, we don't have either candidate here, it is an opportunity, I'm wondering, is it better if we, you know, one, we could send it to Planning and Development, but the other option is we could table to the next meeting, and I'm looking at the appointment time period, and one is January 1st, irregardless, we're not going to be having a Planning and Development meeting until next year. So what I would ask folks are, are they comfortable if we, in this forum, get this opportunity? So just to stay in line with where I thought our philosophy is going, on really, appointments, are we really giving the committees too much work by sending everything there? So that's just something I'm going to entertain, asking the person who proposed and see if he'd be open to that, and make sure we invite those appointees to that meeting, to our next council meeting.
Counselor McCauley?
Yeah, I'd be open to it, but I really think the comfy setting of a committee meeting might be more apropos to getting some, you know, constructive dialogue going and things that go on versus having them interviewed here on the floor. But that was my only thought.
Thank you. Other counselors wishing to speak? Counselor Harmon?
Thank you. Given this is a larger than standard appointment, I'm wondering if the motion might be modified to include Committee of the Whole so that we can have a comfy discussion where more than five counselors can speak.
I'd be open to that if... Okay, so it's friendly, the motion is seconders, so it's all set. So the motion's on the floor, Planning and Development, Committee of the Whole. Motion's in order. Any other comments? Counselor Donahue?
Thank you. Interim president. Yeah, so I, you know, I do agree that, you know, it does make sense to streamline some of these appointments, but some of them, it's just not the same if you don't get a little bit of face time with the applicant. And I do think that, you know, we are missing a lot of that with some of the streamlining we've been doing. I don't know who's getting, you know, I don't know any of the people getting appointed to the sort of, you know, lesser committees or commissions, as it were, like we used to sort of get a little bit of face time and understand why they're volunteering for the city, et cetera. So, you know, I do think there's something lost there with the streamline, but I think an appointment like this, with the relevance of affordable housing conversations, it probably makes sense to have that face time, so, and check in, you know, a little more formally like we do in committees than, because at, you know, to make this point, I do want to make, at committee, you know, we give them time to introduce themselves, we give them time to answer questions, et cetera. If they were to come to counsel, the only opportunity they get is public comment, and they don't, you know, it's not a back and forth, right? So we don't really get to do anything other than just hear a little bit about who they might be for two seconds in public comment, but not the same as the sort of, you know, introduction in a committee, so I'll yield to that.
Thank you, Counselor. Last call. Knowing it's not required, but please call a roll, Mr. Clerk.
I'd be happy to. Mr. President, go ten. Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Z?
Yes.
Counselor Dunne?
Yes.
Counselor Granis?
Yes.
Counselor Hyman?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron, for the record, has recused himself. Meeting six, receiving 10, motion passes.
Thank you. We'll call the president back in. Thank you. I'm not managing this chair well today. That would bring us to Communications.
It would, which there are none. And, Mr. President, there's no transfers. We default to second reading of Appointment 523.
Motion to approve on second reading.
Second. For the record, that's Marsha Edson, 11 Salem Street, tree commission until 12:15 2027.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call?
Roll call on the aforementioned appointment. Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Z?
Yes.
Counselor Dunne?
Yes.
Counselor Granis?
Yes.
Counselor Hyman?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Thank you all.
Bring us to orders.
First three orders were continued from our last meeting. Order 641, which is a gift acceptance, PPA 5,050.
Motion to approve collectively, 641, 642, and 643?
Second.
For the record, 642 is gift acceptance, Central Congregation of 2,000, and Order 643 is a grant acceptance, EMPG 4,600.
Okay, discussion? Hearing none. You know, I'd probably do a roll call on accepting money.
There's three orders. Okay, for the three orders, 641, 642, 643 approval. Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Z?
Yes.
Counselor Dunne?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next order, Mr. President, is 645, which is the Low Street Privilege Fee Discontinuation Order.
Motion to send this to Public Works and Safety?
Second.
Counselor Khan?
Thank you, Council President. Just want to introduce the Order 645, as we talked about at our last meeting, the privilege fee resolution, and what the Water and Sewer Commission had done to ensure that the rest of the fee is collected. In anticipation of that, this order is, as we discussed, it was established by the City Council. The only way to end it is through an order of the City Council, so this is that step to start that and have that conversation. And definitely in committee, I know it's not Committee of the Whole, I don't think it needs to be, but if folks feel that way, but I do think that this is an important next step for us, in anticipation of ensuring no one else is going to be charged the privilege fee. So, thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, this referral to Public Works and Safety, I think you can do a voice vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, that passes 11 to 0.
That would lead us to 646, Mr. President, which is a rules amendment to Rule 10B, gaining the floor, submitted by Counselor Khan.
Yes, motion to refer to General Government.
Second.
Okay, Counselor Khan?
Yes, thank you, Council President. I'll be brief. Again, introducing everything, Order 646, I think we did talk a little bit about General Government in terms of streamlining, trying to keep our meetings really focused on the debate, and I hope people will be open to at least seeing the language that is presented here, definitely open to suggestions, and I look forward to the conversation mainly, and I think this is one thing I ask everyone here who's sitting here, and if we should make it Committee of the Whole, I actually think we should, every single person here has a right to be in this conversation, because this is actually talking about controlling the debate in terms of how much we speak. And I do think that, in fact, I will make amendment to send it to Committee of the Whole if I can do so.
Sure, it's a second. Whoever's second.
Yes, and again, this will be new for us, but it looks like we're in the season of looking at new things to do, and I really do think we could try it, be successful, but what it really comes down to is to ensure every single person here feels like they can speak during a debate without thinking, well, some people spoke, and now it's 40 minutes into one topic, I better just be quiet. So I really want us to control how we're really focusing on the topic, how we're really making debate be substantial, and look forward to the conversation, General Government, on exploring this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any discussion further? Okay, hearing none. Voice vote on referring to the General Government Committee of the Whole. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, thank you. Take 647 to 651 collectively?
647 and?
To 651, inclusive. Okay, so Order 647 through and including? 651. 651 collectively?
So literally, we have 647, a home rule, petition, man or voting. 646, Amendment to Rule 18, public comment. Order 649, Amendment to Rules to Add, Rule 29, City Solicitor. 650, Amendment to Rule 17A, Consent Agenda. And 651, Amendment to Rule 27, Remote Participation. All collectively?
Motion to General Government and Committee of the Whole?
Second.
Okay. And discussion? Counselor Z?
Yeah, I'm happy to follow my colleagues' lead here. So really quick on each one. 647 is a home rule, asking the state legislature to give us back control of voting, manner of voting, for meetings when there's a part of that meeting that's remote. As you may know, when COVID happened, there were rapid executive orders, and then some codified into law that governed when we have to do roll calls and voice votes, and trying to, you know, make a change to that. If you're interested in reading more, some of those provisions will expire in March of 2025, so this is happening at the state level, and I'm kind of dovetailing in that, and I have at least emailed our state delegation to let them know of the existence of this, as well as the mayor, as it is a home rule. 648 is a rule for public comment, so again, trying, really, many of these are surrounded around remote participation, which is all very new, and I wrote the first remote participation thing back in the midst of COVID, but all of it needed to feather throughout the entire rules, so that's the effort there. Rule 29, which is Order 649, is an effort to make an actual rule about how we access the City Solicitor. I think as counselors, it has been difficult to know the right path to work with the clerk, to work with the president, to go directly to the City Solicitor, but we deal in the law, we have lots of questions, so I think it'd be nice to figure out a way that we can all kind of be comfortable with and make sure that everybody can get questions and answers in a timely fashion, and that we all share in the same information that is produced so that we can have good debate. 17A is a consent agenda. That is essentially an attempt to make a rule around what I would consider the pilot that I've been trying on the floor here, I've been continuing things, but setting hard rules about when things should be continued automatically so that it's more transparent, and again, subject to consent agenda rules, so one counselor can end that if, for that matter, if they wish, and I'll talk more about that committee. And then 27 is essentially a modernization of remote participation in light of, again, those COVID-era rules, but also recalling that remote participation existed before COVID, but it was very infrequent, and it was a phone that used to sit right here, and it was really, I know the hours are, you know, sometimes we wish there was more in terms of audio quality, but that was a different era. So things have moved forward, and the committees also need guidance, because we generally adhere to those rules. So those are those items, and just take them up in committee and make the case for them.
Thank you. Any further discussion on those orders collectively? Okay, so these, the motion was made to General Government and Committee of the Whole?
Yes.
Okay, seeing no further discussion, we'll do a voice vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Okay, great, thank you. Gets us to Order 652.
652, which is a gift acceptance with respect to $563.36.
Motion to table?
Second.
Counselor Z?
It's not technically debatable.
Okay.
Unless you want me to explain why.
No, that's okay.
The second was, thank you.
Does it need a second?
Yes.
Me.
All right, do we roll call a motion to table?
I don't think so.
No. All right, voice vote on the motion to table. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no.
No.
Okay, so that will be 10 to 1.
10 to 1, no.
Okay, Order 653.
Motion to refer 653, FY 25 revolving spend limit, bike share program 25,000 collectively with 654, grant acceptance, E911 support and incentive grant to Budget and Finance?
Second.
Okay. So that's 653 and 654?
Correct.
Okay. Any further discussion? Counselor Preston?
Yeah, I'm just curious about, which one is it, 653? When we just discussed the bike share and we talked about not spending any city money on it, why are we setting a spending limit for it?
Counselor Z?
The revolving fund is envisioned to be funded by the user fees that were discussed. So it doesn't, we're not putting any money in it, but we have to establish the fund, the owner, and the rules, and who can spend it on what. So this was to work with the finance director on this to try and set the next stage before we're behind the eight ball, so try and get ahead of it.
Okay, thank you. So 653 and 654 collectively, hearing no further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, and then 655?
655 is a gift acceptance, Friends of Newbury Portraits, I believe, $15,000.
Motion to table?
Second.
Being non-debatable, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And ordinances?
That leads us to second reading of Ordinance 178, affordable housing trust, tax exempt, MGL Chapter 59, Section 50.
Motion to approve on second reading.
Second.
Okay, discussion? Okay, hearing none, roll call?
On second reading of Ordinance 178, Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane? No. Counselor McCauley?
No.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zied?
Yes.
Counselor Dunne?
Yes.
Counselor Granis?
Yes.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Motion passes, thank you.
Thank you.
That would lead us to first reading of Ordinance 190, which is amendment to Chapter 2 of our ordinances, when rules are held.
Motion to refer to general government and committee of the whole. And just to Scrivener's, I think it's when meetings are held, not when rules are held.
I would think you're right.
Second.
It does say when meetings are held.
Okay, thank you. That was a test, and you passed once again.
Okay, motion was made to refer that to general government and committee of the whole. Counselor Harmon?
The second, that was the second.
That was the second, okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you.
Leads us to Ordinance 191, revolving fund, again amending Chapter 2.
Motion refer to budget and finance.
Hearing none, all those in favor of referral for budget and finance say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Next is Ordinance 192, introduced by Counselor Dunne, with respect to brick sidewalks in the downtown zone.
Motion refer to PWS.
Motion made and seconded to refer to PWS. Any discussion?
Yep, if I might introduce this. Yes, thank you. So I just wanted to introduce this, as I know it's going to go into committee, and hopefully we'll have some nice constructive conversations there. So basically, this, the genesis for this is just to allow more streamlined maintenance of our downtown and our sidewalk repair plans. After lengthy conversations with DPS over the years, I do understand that a lot of the problems that DPS runs into when it comes to repairing some of our worst impassable sidewalks throughout the South End and downtown in the less traveled areas is because it's in brick. And the mandate that was put in place just a few years ago, before I came on the council by the former Ward 2 counselor, to only allow brick as a surface material for sidewalks downtown was very short-sighted. Brick is the last material we should be using on our public rights of priority for access for all. As we know, we do have the right for, you know, residents to put extra for brick, and, you know, we certainly do have our ordinances that mean that we replace sidewalks and kind with the same materials, so we have brick sidewalks getting replaced in brick. This does not change any of that. And this is simply striking a mandate that the only material allowed in the downtown be brick. So it's not conducive for the work getting done. And that's what we've seen over the last few years, with only one or two sidewalks even being able to get 10 to do, because it's literally twice as costly to do one brick sidewalk. So that is the main genesis for this, and it is also the beginning of sort of wanting to streamline our city sidewalk ordinances to allow for DPS to get more sidewalks done in a more costly and timely manner. So I hope that this goes to committee without any major debate, and we'll have the debate in committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Dunne. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. Motion was made to refer this to public works and safety. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Okay, thank you.
Next, Mr. President's, Ordinance 193, which is amending the subsequent term of the electrical inspector.
We should send a PWS.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, voice vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Say no. Gets us to committee items?
Motion to approve Ordinance 180 as amended in committee.
Second.
Thank you. Ordinance 180 is the first of three salary-related ordinances. It is specific to the mayor's salary. Per our charter, the mayor's salary is set by ordinance, and changes may be made at any time, but they can only go into effect at the beginning of the next term. So this proposal came in as a change commencing in January of 2026, changing and modifying the mayor's salary from 102,750, $102,750, to 125, and also proposed inserting language around the, what was called the expense $3,000, which was already in there, and then adding a $5,100 travel allowance. That was the original proposal, so just to rewind for a quick sec, the $5,100 and the $3,000 have been being paid for some years, but adding the $5,100 into the codification of the ordinance was new. The $3,000 was existing. So that's what the proposal started as. The committee had a long-range in conversation about the role of the mayor, and then the fact that it's a full-time job, for example, in comparison perhaps to the city council or the school committee. We also looked at information presented by the finance director related to other communities, and also not only what their salaries are, but also how they set them. And some have, there's widely varying provisions around this, how it's set, how it's updated, and all of those different things. Conversation then turned to, you know, our bit of a sporadic nature on updating this. The last change took effect to the mayor's salary in January of 2020, so it was done prior. I don't have exact date that that was done, but that's when it last went into effect. So it's been about four years since that has been looked at. And so with that, and it was committee of the whole, the committee and committee of the whole members worked, I think, diligently in committee. And the final amended version is basically a simplification, I would say, of the ordinance in the sense that the $3,000 travel expense is stricken from the ordinance. The $5,100, which was proposed, it doesn't exist, was also stricken from the proposal, leaving just the salary of $125,000. It does not mean that those two items cannot or will not be paid, but rather they will be budget items as they have been, and they'll be subject to debate at the budgetary time. And so that was where the decision went on that. It would still take effect January 2026. And then finally, working together, came to an agreement, in the committee at least, to increase this on a 2% basis each fiscal year, starting in July 1, so next fiscal year, and continuing until June 30 of 2034, which is effectively giving you a little bit of a runway. And then that specific provision, the 2% provision, would expire. Of course, it could always be extended, changed, or left to expire by a future council. And that's what comes to you. In an effort to try and share with you the votes that were taken in council as best I can, the initial motion to make it 125 with the 2% was motion and seconded, and that ultimately passed 3-0. And then in the end, striking the other items passed 3-0. And altogether, as amended that you see it now in the packet, it was 3 to 0. And that's the story.
Thank you. Discussion? Counselor McCauley?
Yeah, so I did support adjusting the salary going forward. I think the debate that came out noted that at this particular salary level, it would be at an AMI of 1. So, I mean, I think that we've got to understand that the nature of what we're trying to do here and that folks were trying to encourage to come here. And I was supportive of trying to codify, to a certain degree, annual increases of the salary incrementally. 2% seemed like a good number and compromise going forward. I'll share some information now that we can think upon for the other ones as well, that over the last 10 years or so, the cost of living has gone up roughly just under 2.5% or so going forward. Even the crazy years of inflation, we also needed to balance those with 0.5 degree of rates of inflation, et cetera, along the way. And so, you know, when we talk about this going forward in the number of years that we have, 2% inflation could be good, 1.5 might be better. Remember, we are leaders in this in trying to set a strategy going forward, but I will listen to the debate that goes forward on this. What we want to do is we want to make sure that this position is funded and funded appropriately going forward. We've talked a lot about how we get better people in, and having some stability in terms of salary, et cetera, along the way is a positive message for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Counselor Zied?
Thank you. In committee, I was the proponent of the 2%, and I want to give my reasoning and explanation to the taxpayers as to why. I was studying prior data in Newbury Port. So you have the inflation data, CPI, you can look at all sorts of different metrics. But bottom line for me is that when we do it in this jerky motion, where we ignore it for five years or more, and then we do something, and then we ignore it for five years or more, we've been averaging about 3.62% increases, based on the calculations I did. So 3.62 is too high, in my opinion. You know, there's going to be a lot of conversation, I think, in the ensuing years about what's sustainable for the city budget and so forth. But it's proven to me anyways, by looking at the data, that doing the fits and spurts is not actually more economically advantageous. And we need to set something that's reasonable. We can't assume it will be static forever. It is a full-time position, that is meaningful to me. People who run, and you can only do this if you live in the city, so we're working with a relatively small pool of potential folks who can run. You've got to respect that that's the case. And then the last thing is, you know, I also want to take out this notion that it's always about the current administration, or even what you might think a future administration's going to be. This, to me, is transparent, you can read it, 2% is numerical, it beats the 10-year average, and it's very defensible, in my opinion. And inflation will always vary, but I think even if you looked at a 40-year horizon, 2% would ultimately be pretty reasonable. And I think will signal to others in the city that, you know, 2% is a sensible figure that we can contemplate against a prop 2 and 1/2. So I hope it will be considered. And for me, that was really what got me over, because the 125 felt like too much. But that's the whole nature of this, is we waited four years with doing nothing. So trying to come to something sensible.
Thank you. Counselor Khan?
Yes, thank you, Council President. And not to add, I agree with what colleagues have just said completely in support of this. I think the one thing, just to really reiterate for those listening, is it really does start after we have our elections in fall, so it's in January 2026. We had a lot of good information, too, on really getting good people. What does it take to get this position, this job, and get people to apply for it or want to be in it? So definitely in support of this, and I think this will go along the theme of the other two that we're going to be talking about in the next orders. So, thank you, in support.
Thank you. Further discussion on Order 1?
Ordinance 180.
180, thank you.
Mr. President, if I might add, who was the second on that?
Probably me.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call?
Roll call on first reading of Ordinance 180. Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zie?
Yes.
Counselor Dunne?
Yes.
Counselor Granis?
Yes.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Motion passes, thank you.
Motion to approve Ordinance 181 as amended in committee.
Second.
Thank you. So the second of three, again, related to salaries. This one is specifically the city council. I think there's some common provisions in the charter with how these are set. So this, too, would commence with the next inauguration of the city council, which also is January of 2026. The initial proposal came in increasing the, each city councilor's salary from $9,000 to $11,000 per year, and the president's salary from salary, pardon me, from $11,000 to $13,000. Through a fairly lengthy conversation, I would say, to summarize it, again, mirrors and shades of the prior conversation, but counselors are more of a volunteer position. And as opposed to a full-time position, many counselors do carry other full-time jobs and things along those lines, and just trying to think about what the role and nature is of the council. Similarly, the finance director presented some other information about other communities and things like that. But with that said, I think the conversation turned to the idea that we had really, very recently, just really looked at city council salaries. They had changed in 2021, so it felt a little bit recent, I think, for many members of the committee. And so for that reason, there wasn't a lot of, frankly, support for revisiting those salaries so soon. So to summarize finally, what the committee ended up doing was first, making a change, changing the word salary to stipend. And so the word salary appears twice in 2-126. Those were both stricken in the amended version, replaced with stipend. It also did not appear, but now does, in the title of 2-126, which is salary and stipends. I think broadly dovetailing with what I was just saying, the committee felt that the stipend term was more appropriate for what this actually is supposed to represent and what it means, and it's more, it's a more responsible term, I think, for, say, a person of the public reviewing it. What is this, and what is it for? And so that was done. I do want to say that this was battered around heavily as well in terms of would it have an impact on a counselor's ability to participate in the retirement system, should they achieve the 10 years of credible service, which is required? The answer is no. The finance director answered that, and then followed up as well with the retirement board. And so as long as the payments are quote "regular" and reoccurring, then you are, you may validly participate. It's 10 years is the minimum, that has nothing to do with this ordinance, that's just the rule. And then you can participate in the retirement. Counselors may be participating or not, and some may get to the 10 years, and some may not over the life of the city council here. So that was one change. And then in committee, there was another proposed amendment, which was to change the 9,000 to 9,500. That did not carry the day in committee. And then there were a few other amendments made specifically around the 2% increase automatic, similar to what we just did for the mayors. But those motions were made without seconds, one to do 2% per fiscal year, one to do 2% per term. They did not get a second in committee, so they weren't really discussed. So what you see here is the final version, replacing the word salary with stipend and adding stipends to the title on a vote of 3 to 0 of the committee. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Counselor Wright?
Just a point of order, perhaps it's a Scrivener's error, but shouldn't those dates be January 2026 to align with the other ones?
Counselor Zie?
Yeah, we reverted back, because we didn't change the salaries. But, I mean, I think you could argue it either way, commencing in 2022. It's now in the past, so that might be weird, but we're not really changing anything. So I defer to the clerk. I think we can, I don't think it changes what it says.
Yeah, I think it's okay the way it is. Particularly because there's no change.
Yeah, the dollar amounts are reverted back to where they were.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you.
I think that makes sense. Further discussion? Counselor Khan?
Yeah, thank you, Council President. The one thing I was going to add, and I think the chair did a little kind of, you know, why was there a motion for 9,500? And that was coming from me, and I'll explain a little bit about it. And then just see here with the bigger council, do we have an appetite for this? And one of the things that I believe I forwarded as well to the whole council here is some recent analysis done by Framingham on council, just looking at other cities, and the role of the council and council president. And right now, we have $2,000 difference between a city counselor and the council president's stipend. What I was trying to do is, with a lot of the other communities, many of them our size, there wasn't that big of a difference. Many of them were at the same, actually, stipends. And the 2,000 seemed to have been something that we had in place and that we were just following. So when we were incrementing it, we kept that difference there. We'll talk about school committee, and you'll see the difference there is $500 between the school committee chair and the regular school committee. So I am going to try this again, and try to propose keep council president at 11,000. But this time to kind of start level-setting us a little bit, I think we do not need to have that big of a difference between the two, the president and the city councilors. I'm going to make an amendment here, and I'm just going to see if there's an appetite for it. But I'd like to amend the 9,000 to 10,000 for the city council, and see if there's an appetite for that here. Thank you.
Second.
Okay, so amendment made and seconded by Counselor McCauley?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd like to actually add to that amendment, if the sponsor would like, and add a 2% per term increase, so that would be 1% a year.
Sure.
Is that accepted?
Second.
Friendly, I guess?
2% per term, yes.
2% per term, yes.
There's a second. McCauley was a second.
No, I thought you were.
You were in the motion.
I'll second the amendment.
So the original amendment was made by Counselor Khan?
Seconded by Counselor Preston.
No, no.
Counselor Preston.
It's Counselor Donahue.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
So I made a friendly amendment.
All right. And it's accepted by both?
By both.
Okay. Counselor McCauley?
Yeah, so I did some thinking on this after the council debate on this, and, you know, I always subscribe to the words of Mark Twain, that politicians and dirty diapers should be changed often for the same reason, right? And I do think that we need to have a sense of urgency here as politicians to be able to do our work and then be able to move on. But what I sensed here in the discussion that was on is that we're talking about changing the words from "salary" to "stipend," to say that it's a volunteer job. And in a way, you can look at this and say, we're creating our own clique. We're starting to show our privilege a little bit. And what I mean by that is, we spent a lot of time talking about how we encourage different people to come forward. And sure, it's a job, so stipend doesn't necessarily relate to job, but it is a job. It's a part-time job going forward. And in order to get different people, we actually have to pay, right? So we have to actually make it worthwhile for stay-at-home folks who might struggle with childcare, who might be able to swap childcare and come for evening kind of meetings going forward, for retired people that are recently retired, that still want to stay active in their community, that are struggling with real estate tax increases and things like that, might be a great place for them to become engaged on. What I'm trying to get to is, if we want to encourage different people for different reasons, we have to think differently. And part of it starts with, this isn't a volunteer job, it's a job. And some of us here are fortunate that 6,000, 9,000, 10,000 are relevant numbers in the larger scheme of things. But for some people, it's a big deal, and it can matter to them going forward. So I'm hoping that we can signal here that by going to 10,000 and saying that it increases 1% a year, 2% a term, right, that we can, again, signal, and I know I'm going 180 from where I was most of the conversation, but I think we need to signal to others in the larger community who want to participate in government that it's okay, and we're willing to pay you for that going forward. So I encourage you to think through that and contemplate those words, and hopefully join me in voting yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Counselor Donahue?
Thank you, President. Yeah, so I, too, had a lot of thinking after our last very robust meeting on this. And I do want to echo the sentiment of the Ward 5 council, you know, and I would add to that list, there's a lot of folks that are young with various disabilities who would love to be involved and are on fixed incomes, and something like a part-time, you know, salary, as it were, might be more enticing. You know, hi. So, not that I'm advocating that for myself, but I'm thinking for anyone, including that list, right, we do want to attract different types of people, not just folks that have nice, you know, comfortable nine-to-five-salary-paying jobs that, you know, this is just an extra little spending cash. I mean, for some people, this could be really making the difference for their lifestyles. So for that reason, I do support these changes, amendments. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Counselor Wright?
Thank you, Council President. I would be in support of the dollar figures. I think words are important, and so I think that by placing this particular role, the city council role, as a stipend, when the mayors are salary and the school committees are salaries, it might, I would probably want to return back to the salary, just because words matter. And so I'd be supportive of this either way, but I would like to see the word "salary" back in there rather than "stipend."
But it's not a big deal.
Further discussion on the amendment on the floor? Counselor Zee?
Thank you. On the amendment specifically, which I understand it to be 9 to 10 and 2% per term, not the word, I won't be supporting the amendment. I'm a strong believer that, A, I agree very much so that we just did this, and I think that has to mean something, there has to be some cadence to this thing. So there's an argument for having a 2% or something like that, just as the mayor, but we sort of just did it. That's number one. Number two is, I think no matter what strata you come from, you know, if you're here three to four nights a week, anything in this range is very difficult to look at as a salary. And, you know, we're looking at, we just looked at, two weeks ago, average single-family tax bills in the City of Newbury report, there's an interesting nexus between roughly the amount that we're talking about here and roughly that number, and that's troubling for its own sort of sense. But I think this is public service, it is volunteerism, no matter who you are, and everybody's welcome and should be interested to do it. But it really is, it's really effectively a stipend, it's a reimbursement of expenses that you may incur just in the natural course of doing your work. In terms of compensating somebody for their time, I think that's a harder argument to make, and I would be strongly opposed to, say, making this a full-time job with a full-time salary, not just on financial basis alone for the city and sort of the unaffordability of that. But also, I think it's not really the intent. I think the intent is that we're supposed to, as a body, live in the community, work in the community, do the things that people do, and then come and represent them and their interests here on the floor. And I think we do that best when it is on the pendulum closer to the volunteer end of things than it is to the job end of things. Thank you.
Mr. Clark, you got your hand up?
I do, Mr. President, just for clarification. I see this now as a motion to increase from 9,000 to 10,000, the stipend, if you will, and then 2% per term. However, does it need an increasing date? In other words, are we mirroring the ordinance at 180 that says 2% beginning with fiscal year starting July 1, 2026? We are.
Well, point of order. I think it was said "term," right?
It is, it's "term," or I'm looking at, does it matter if it's 1% annually or 2% a term to the finance director?
We just need to know when it takes effect.
So I was just looking for clarification, I guess, as to when it would start.
Okay, Counselor Zee?
Just to offer some help, because we went through this similar conversation during the mayors. So first thing is that January 2022 would need to change as well to January 2026, commencing with inauguration, so that would need to come into play.
Correct.
And then same with the second January 2022, you could argue can stay because that's referring to the president, and that's at least not yet proposed to change. The 9 to 10 is only for councillors. Am I making sense so far?
Yes.
Then the second thing is, we had a debate in committee on what 2% per year meant, and we landed on fiscal year, thinking that it made it easiest to budget for rather than doing calendar year. So I think it's a policy decision, but just from a budgeting perspective, we landed, at least in committee, that if you did it by fiscal year, at least, you know, you would be able to put a number in and not have to bridge the gap between two calendar years and one fiscal year.
And because of the prohibition against giving yourself a raise in your term that would start in 2026, correct?
Yeah, so the first, commencing with the inauguration of the council in January 2026 and continuing thereafter, the annual stipend of each councillor except the president shall be $10,000, both written and in parentheses, commencing with the inauguration of the city council in January 2022 and continuing thereafter, the annual stipend of the council president shall be 11. And then from here, I would defer to the amendment sponsors to 2% per term, or if you want to do it per fiscal year, and if you want a sunset on that, that's, you know, that's the policy question, so.
I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I thought it was fairly clear that it's 2% per term, beginning fiscal year on July 1, 2026. Am I right? Okay.
Okay. And stipend back to salary, is that?
No.
It's not, it hasn't been announced yet.
No, and I should say, and there's no sunset provision unless you tell me there is.
Okay, so that's the motion on the floor. Counselor Director Manning?
Yeah, just as the person who needs to implement this in payroll. The, yeah, it just seems a little awkward as we've kind of landed on it with a half-year increment there. I'm wondering if it would be possible to use the same language in the previous ordinance, just changing the 2% to be 1%, so effectively, it will be 2% each term. In other words, the annual stipend of the councillors shall automatically increase by 1% beginning with the fiscal year starting July 1, 2026, and each fiscal year thereafter. And if you want to add this, with this provision set to sunset on June 30, 2034, just a suggestion.
We're getting some nods.
Yeah, I think that's all friendly.
So Counselor Khan made the original motion to amend, and Counselor Donahue seconded it.
Yep.
So, just so I'm clear, including the sunset language?
Yes.
I'd also like to make a friendly amendment.
Okay, let's just make sure we're good on the amendment as now, and then Counselor Donahue, you can add yours. So everything that Director Manning said, we got?
We got.
All right. Counselor Donahue?
And to include the reverting back to salary over stipend? If the sponsoring amender is okay with it?
I mean, I think it's fine. I actually, it wasn't my suggestion, but I supported it, so I'm good with salary or stipend. So if that's, you know, maybe just to be clean about it, let's, maybe that could be a new amendment, let's do that and just...
Okay.
All right, so the amendment on the floor is about the salary and the 1%, and that's what we're debating, and we'll deal with this, and then perhaps the stipend issue in a different amendment. Counselor Lane?
I just, I have a question in terms of the salary versus stipend. One thing I intend to do is to look at the availability of benefits for councillors moving forward in terms of going into health insurance and things like that, so I wanted to ask if salary versus stipend, if it's a stipend, it's going back to saying it's a volunteer, making you ineligible for potentially getting, being able to participate in insurance benefits down the road, or so on, is that, can you just clarify that for me?
Sure. So currently, city councillors and school committee members are not eligible to receive health insurance benefits. That was a creation of a city council order, maybe eight to 10 years ago. Prior to that, they were eligible for health insurance. That is a local rule that was put into effect that, you know, could be changed at any time. But really, whether it's salary or stipend, that wouldn't impact whether or not the city offers health insurance to elected officials, except for the mayor.
Okay.
All right, Counselor Manning?
Just a follow-up. So that is something that I'm going to be entertaining, is reversing that, because I do feel that, sitting at this table, this is a job. I do support the amendment for the amount and the increases over time, the incremental increases, but I will be pursuing that at some point, just to let you all know.
Okay, further discussion on the amendment? Counselor Grantis?
Thank you. Just quickly, I'm curious from my colleagues if there happens to be an appetite for keeping the $9,000 for councillors, adding $1,000 for chairs of committees to the amount of extra work that the chairman, chairmen and women do, and also increasing the salary of the council president, along with the 2% increase, or 1% annual increase.
Okay, so we have the motion to amend on the floor. Counselor Lane?
I, just to answer through the chair, I wouldn't be in support of that. I feel like we all add different levels, it's not just about going to meetings here. So I don't think that one person's time is worth more than the other. If you're a chair, that's great. It's also dictated heavily by the president at the time, so.
Counselor Zee?
I just want to make a suggestion. May we please, without me moving the question, may we please vote on the amendment and dispose of that, so then we can level-set and we can have new debates if we want? But I think it'd be instructive to see where this is.
Did you just ask me to repeat it?
Yes, I did. You read my mind, thank you.
This is what I think we have right now, commencing with the inauguration of council in January 2026 and continuing thereafter, the annual stipend for each councillor except the president shall be nine, I'm sorry, $10,000, that's moving from 9 to $10,000. Nothing changes with the next sentence, which relates to the council president. However, adding after the $10,000, it would be, shall automatically increase by 2% beginning with fiscal year starting July 1, did I say 2%? Increase by 1% beginning with fiscal year starting July 1, 2026, and each fiscal year thereafter, with the provision to sunset on June 30, 2034.
Shall increase by 1% each fiscal year. I think we missed that part.
Yeah.
That's what he said.
Did you say?
Not what it says in the other...
The annual salary of the council shall automatically increase by 1%. Oh, okay. Beginning with the fiscal year and each fiscal year thereafter. And then you have the provision, with the provision to sunset, that was accepted friendly?
It was.
On June 30, 2034.
Yeah, it's essentially changing 2% to 1% in that line.
Yep, and mayor to council.
Yeah. Okay, so we're clear on the amendments?
No.
Counselor Preston?
Yeah, just a quick question. So my understanding of what you just said does not include the annual increase to the council president. Is that what we're intending?
The way I read it.
That's the way he read it, too, but I think it was intended to imply to all of them.
Yeah, it would seem to me that if we're going to consider that annual percentage increase for the councillors, it should be also for the president.
Yes.
So the president stays at 11,000, however, will go up 1% annually, beginning, yes.
So my suggestion would be to change the date so that commencing on 2026?
And that would be a good suggestion. Yeah.
Then from that point forward...
So vote dates changed from '22 to '26.
That catches both, that catches the increase for both sets, and leaves the salary at 11,000.
Mm-hmm. I think it's clear.
Yes.
As it can be. Maybe we go to a vote, Mr. President?
All right. Hearing no further discussion on the amendment, as retold to us by the clerk, we'll do a roll call on the amendment.
I would think so. Okay, on said motion, Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
No.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zee?
No.
Counselor Donahue?
Yes.
Counselor Grantis?
No.
Counselor Harmon?
No.
And Counselor Cameron?
No.
6-5.
6-5 needing 6, it's ours, I know. Motion passes.
Okay. All right, so we have the, yes, the whole ordinance has been amended. Counselor Zee?
Yeah, just on the underlying motion, I just want to say that I came out of committee thinking there was a bit more consensus around this. I am very much opposed to the direction that this has gone. It's gone much further away from the stipend volunteerism aspect, the, we looked at this very recently aspect, to it's a job, we need salary, we need benefits, and I would say that, you know, to be blunt, I think more important than the numbers on this one, because frankly, the numbers nominally are fairly small. $1,000 is not a large figure as a percentage of the entire city budget. But the message that's being sent here, I think both to residents and to other stakeholders, is not the message that I was hoping would be sent, which is one of, you know, sort of, yeah, a little bit of fiscal responsibility, a little bit of constraint and restraint against challenging times, and a reflection that the city council, yeah, we do this because we want to serve the community, and, you know, it's nice to receive a stipend to help, again, offset expenses and so forth. I think there's some question, yes, we can debate the words matter, what's a salary, what's a job, what's a volunteer position, but for the time away from my family, for the time away from my day job, from the, you know, the sort of added stress of doing this, I can tell you that it's a volunteer role to me, and that's what I think it should be. And I think taken to a logical extreme, a lot of the arguments made tonight would support the idea that this should become, you know, a full-time position with a full-time salary, and that is very much, to me, the wrong direction. So I thought we had kind of centered around that in committee, but obviously, it is subject to change as it is here, and the motion's carried, so I cannot support this ordinance as it now stands. Thank you.
Further discussion on the underlying motion? Counselor Khan?
Yeah, thank you, Council President. I do support this, much for the reasons that we mentioned previously, and I really want to end and leave people with this. Every time we run, so every two years, all of us, we choose whether or not we want to continue this or not. We know the level of work that's involved. We could call it volunteerism, we could call it a job, but whatever it is, it's not easy. It is not easy. And I could tell you, when we see and we run, some of us don't have a race, some of us do have a race, but we still don't have a lot of people running for city council. And why is that? So even if this is nominal, it's something, because this job is not easy, but it is something that we are giving back to our community. Because this job is not easy, but it is something that we are giving back to our community. We are setting tax rates, we have the budget before us. It is a work that needs to be thoughtful and needs us to do our homework, that needs us to talk to residents, that needs us to be present. We need to respond to emails. You know, the council here, we streamline, so now it's easy for residents to find us at citycouncil@cityofnewburyport.com. It was not like that before. It was very hard for residents to reach us. They had to know how to spell our last names right, which sometimes is not easy for some names here. But I am telling you that the residents need to hold us accountable. And I hope that they recognize this nominal additional 1,000, which is 10,000 across the board that we're adding, I hope they think it's warranted because we work our butts off in here, and we really do. And it's not easy. And so I personally feel like this is a small step towards really recognizing and getting people to really acknowledge and feel good about the work we're doing. And it is small. It's not a huge amount. And my original intention was really around the council and the president, because I do feel like the level of work for us across the board is the same. We each carry the same vote as well, whether we're a ward councilor or an at-large. Each vote here has the same weight. And that's really what some of the intention too was, to bridge that gap. So yeah, I will be supporting this, and I hope others really do do the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion, Counselor McCauley?
Yeah. I do want to always put a precautionary tale that we don't want to go too far, right? We don't want to say, we don't want to go to the extremes that it is a full-time job because it's not. Fiscally, I don't think we could legitimately support that and justify what we're doing here. But on the other hand, it is serviced, public service back to the community going forward. But like everything, public service to some folks has a cost to it. And so I'm trying to, and I did, and I admitted, I changed 180 degrees from where I was because I thought it should go a certain way and it should be more finite going forward. But thinking on how we get more people here is front and center here going forward. Some of us may run, some of us may not run, whatever the case may be, going forward, don't ever see this potential change. But, so what do you leave for the next person? What do you leave is something that is worthwhile for them to step off the sidelines and into. Again, it's not a lot of money for the amount of work that you should be doing to do your job effectively going forward, but it is something. And I do hope the messaging isn't that we're going, we're trying to say we want to go to full-time roles. No. What we're saying is that we think possibly you might need some assistance, you might need some childcare, you might need some Uber rides, you might need some things like that that might be able to help you do that going forward. And so that's why I have changed where I was previously on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion, Counselor Donahue?
Thank you. One last point I do want to make, because it was stated that, you know, we did revisit, you know, this is, we're revisiting this very soon after having just raised it in 2021. I do want to make the point that by the time this goes into effect, that's five years. So if I did the math right, 2021 to 2026 is five years, right? So that seems fair. That doesn't seem like it's so soon. It doesn't seem like, because it's not going into effect for us, it's going into effect in a, over a year, right? So that kind of does create a little more of a gap. So there is that.
Counselor Harmon?
Thank you. I'll be brief. I won't be supporting this. Appreciate the debate and discussion over the weekend. I adopted family for the holidays, and the amount of need in the community, when you think about, it's only $10,000, you know, from a budget standpoint, you know, the amount that that, the length that that can go in our community is not limited. Secondly, you know, putting it more to front and center of what we do here, that could go toward, if you gave us $1,000, that could go toward a minute taker, that could go toward a legislative aide, that could go toward any number of things that I think could help us to do the work more efficiently, more transparently, and potentially better. Going into my pocket isn't helping. So I would, I will not support this.
Okay. Thank you. Further discussion?
Sure. I'll say something.
Counselor Lane?
I'm going to support this. And I'm not talking about turning this into a full-time job with benefits. My own story is, I didn't have health insurance, and as a lot of you know, I get sick, and because I didn't have health insurance, I put off going to the doctor. Had I had the availability to purchase city insurance, maybe that wouldn't have happened. So for myself, I see something different. I don't look at it as myself. I don't, you know, the money's great, you don't do it for the money. This isn't, I don't think anybody sitting here is doing it for the money. But to attract people in the future, you've got to keep up with, you know, is it worth your time? And people look and they ask me all the time, you know, why do you keep doing that? You're crazy. It's like 40 cents an hour. Yeah, it is, but I love the city, I'm from the city. But I'm a minority now. I mean, there's not a lot of people that have a true love for the city, that they will give up what, give up their time for no return. Nobody's getting rich here, nobody's, you know, supporting, but yeah, is it going to offset someone's tax bill? For sure. Is it going to help out when they need it? For sure. And if they do look into, you know, having the availability of benefits or something else, well, maybe down the road, you know, again, this isn't about me, it's not about any of us sitting here. This is about the next wave of who's going to step up and who's going to serve the city. So like I said, I'm in full support of it. I'm not trying to, I'm just want to clear the air and say, I'm not looking for this, that, the other thing, this, I do not want this as a full-time job, but it is. I mean, it takes a lot of time out of your, things you could be doing. My son's games I've missed, I've missed work opportunities, it's cost me money when it comes down to it. So, but I love doing it and I do it for the city. So to me, it's a paid volunteer job. So that's where I'm at. I'm in full support of this, and I encourage you all to look at it the same.
Okay. Thank you. Further discussion? All right. Hearing none, we'll have a roll call.
So roll call on ordinance 181 as amended. Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
No.
Counselor Shan?
No.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Z?
No.
Counselor Donahue?
Yes.
Counselor Grantis?
No.
Counselor Harmon?
No.
Counselor Cameron?
No.
Am I right? Did that motion just fail?
Yep. It did. Six, five.
Five, six. Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
All right.
182?
Motion to approve Order 182 as amended in committee.
Second.
Okay. So this is the third of three. This is related to the school committee salaries without saying a lot of the same things. This was to propose to change the, each school committee member's now stipend in the proposal from 3,000 to 4,000, and the vice chair from 3,600 to 5,000. In committee, the only change that was made was stipend. But I'm going to suggest that because the last one failed, to keep consistency and harmony, we put this one back to salary, just because the other one failed entirely. So basically, we didn't change the ordinance, it stays. So I'm going to, I have, well, let me start with my motion. I made a motion to approve 182 as amended. And was that seconded?
Yeah.
Second. So I'm going to make a motion to amend to return salary back to the, strike and stipends from the title and change stipend back to salary. I think it's clean and harmonious. If we want to take it up later on both of them, they should be the same, in my opinion.
So a motion was made, and who was the second on that? Counselor Harmon?
Oh, I'm sorry. I got sidetracked. So with that said, the committee discussed this, a lot of the same conversation. In the end, though, it was two to one in committee, I was the dissenting vote. I think most of the conversation's been captured as far as the reasoning around all of this, so.
All right. Thank you. Discussion on ordinance 182. Counselor Preston?
Yeah, thank you. So boy, I've been all over the place tonight on this one. Well, the last one, but they're all carrying in the same vein for me. And ultimately, where I did end up with a no on the last one is, you know, the counselor from Ward 4, I think he's very right, frankly. I think, you know, these are nominal increases for us, but this sort of money put to other good uses throughout the community are, I think it really could be much better there. In particular with this, with the school committee, I mean, we are looking at 25% increases for the school committee members and a 39% increase for the vice chair, which just seems, frankly, egregious to me. These rules also are volunteer, they are, you know, they're, I don't want to belittle the rule, they are, you know, a significant role in the community, but it is certainly a lot less time than council members. And so I am going to be a no on this as well, because I think, again, this is really just a stipend for people, and I think 25% and 39% increases for school committee are really out of line. Thank you.
Okay. Further discussion? Okay. Hearing none. So the motion is to approve as amended in committee and stipend changes back to salary, or stipend is stricken.
Back, just back to salary.
So that was a friendly amendment anyways, was it not?
The sponsor, so.
So you're right, Mr. President. The only change really before what is, before us is that stipend is stricken, it goes back to salary.
Yeah. But the motion on the floor is still to increase from three to four, and from 36 to five.
Correct.
Yep. Just all salary, no stipend terminology.
As written.
Okay. Everyone clear? Roll call.
Roll call on that motion to approve as written 182.
Point of order, I just want to state that if this fails, it's the same as the last one. It means we just didn't change it at all. So it stays salary. So just want to make sure everybody's aware of what a nay is.
Counselor Khan?
Sorry. I do want to speak something. Thank you, Council President. Keep in mind, school committee, it's a four-year responsibility. Unlike when we changed, just so, I want to say why I supported this, is unlike when council changed their salaries back in 2021, we didn't do anything to school committee. This is grossly understated. I want to say that for the work they do. As we found out, you know, they also manage a lot of other things. The budget, if you look at the size of the budget of the city, that is the responsibility of the school committee. That is a compelling enough reason right there, as is the fact that, you know, anything that they have to handle, they hire the superintendent, they also deal with any type of litigation that's happening that they solely are responsible for. It's a big role. And so I really do think this one is warranted. I hope others also will recognize that our school committee needs to be supported this way, and I hope this one will pass, unlike the other one. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Any further discussion? Counselor Donahue?
Yeah. So I just want to agree with the at-large counsel that just spoke. I also hope that this does pass because frankly, I'm a little disheartened. Apparently, I don't know. I, I'm a little stunned that, maybe I'm just the only poor one on this council, because I don't have a luxurious full-time job or, you know, retirement to live a cushioned life on. So not that I'm going to be here in 2026, but I feel it's a little disingenuous to assume that every counselor doesn't feel that $1,000 is a significant amount to them. Because to me, it is. That's a lot. So I don't know. I think that the city council and the school committee deserve to be recognized for the hard work that we do. And like I said, you know, five years' gap in change is a significant amount of time and for the school committee, as was stated, with nothing at all done in 2021, this is overdue. So, you know, I, in this climate, economically for everybody, we're included in it. It's not, we're not, not part of the population of the city. We're part of it. Maybe, maybe not all of us are, you know, in the majority with your incomes, but we're still part of it.
Thank you. Counselor Donahue, any further discussion? Counselor Lane?
I'm not slightly disheartened, I'm very disheartened at this point. I'm going to support this. I don't think that $1,000 that could go to something else in the community is a reason for me to impact the salary of, or stipend, whichever you want to say it, of the school committee. They work hard, just as hard as we do, to attract more people to step up as a paid volunteer. I think it's important to keep up and make that attractive to people again. I will say that I will keep this in my head for when overspending occurs throughout our budget, and if we want to talk about making an impact with the community or putting money somewhere else, that's going to be echoed again. So I'm going to support it. I hope you all do as well. And this goes differently than the last one.
Thank you, Counselor Lane. Any further discussion? All right. Seeing none, we'll do a roll call.
So roll call on approving 182 as written, one change, stipend goes back to salary. Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
No.
Counselor Preston?
No.
Counselor Shan?
No.
Counselor Wright?
No.
Counselor Z?
No.
Counselor Donahue?
Yes.
Counselor Grantis?
No.
Counselor Harmon?
No.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Motion fails. Receiving four, needing six.
All right. Motion to approve transfers, 205.
Yeah, second.
Okay. So to try, I'll try my best to be as concise as possible. This is a transfer that's attached to a union contract. The amount of the transfer is $212,936 and change. The union in question here is the AFSMI Union, and that encompasses 87 employees throughout the city, including DPS, library, police, and treasurer, employees from therein, not every employee from those departments. The $212,000 is attached to that new contract that would go retroactive back to the beginning of FY '25, the current fiscal year, so back approximately six months, let's call it, and then forward for three years. An approval of this transfer by the city council is essentially an acceptance of the contract and will bind the city to the additional years of the contract. So that's the basics of it. The $212,000 in terms of sources are separated, as you can see, through a variety of accounts that align with those departments, because some of them are related to enterprise funds, some are related to general fund, and all of those sorts of different things. The committee met and had, again, I think, a pretty robust conversation about this. To give you the typical high, high-level things, it is a three-year contract. The first year is a 4.25% increase, the second year is 3.75%, and the third year is 4.00%. That's the amount stipulated in the contract, and it's a combination each year. In the first year, it's a 2.5% COLA plus a 1.75% market adjustment. In the second year, it's 2.5 COLA and 1.25 market, and then equalling to 3.75%. And then the final year, it's 2.5 COLA plus 1.5 market adjustment. The finance director presented us with some information, and in particular, as we've learned, the COLAs and the market adjustments are not the whole story. There's also the question of the steps and grades. One represents the longevity effectively, how long an employee has been with the city, and the grade is a representation of essentially the difficulty of their position, or if they are able to acquire new skills or perhaps do more things. acquire new skills or perhaps do more things. And so when run through that prism, the estimated increases are 5.3% in the first year, 5.4% in the second year, 4.6%. And so that's the high-level conversation. We really had a lot of robust conversation about this. I think on the one end of things, one end of the spectrum is the need to obviously compensate employees, the need to have salaries be commensurate with what the market is offering. I will note on that second one that presented by the finance department and the HR department, which was also represented, there was an underlying study done. I believe it's called a wage, wage and compensation. Is that the right term?
Wage and classification.
Wage, sorry, I knew it was, wage and classification. So these are studies that can be done periodically to basically assess where the employees are falling, both in terms of what the wages are relative to other cities and towns. And then the classification is obviously are, are the positions in the right grades. And in the previous iteration of this contract, the city agreed to do a wage and classification study. That wage and classification, classification study was completed in, in advance of this negotiation or in conjunction with this negotiation. And we did talk a little bit about, you know, how something like that gets put together. And the report was shared with the council. It's in the slides, and you can pull the link for it if you'd like to take a look at it for yourself. The, the administration looked at four different firms. They put out a public invite, and from their one firm called HRS was selected. And so that's on the one end of things was, was sort of that. And then on the other end of things were, A, the budgetary impact. You see that the total stipend, the total stipend, now I'm still backing up here. The total impact is around the $212,000. Because this is a backdate to the beginning of this fiscal year, that is effectively a full year, you know, is basically what it's telling you. So you would expect budgetary impacts, again, to be similar but increasing in future years, given the numbers that, that I shared with you on the increases. Then the other concern was this relative to the budget contingency. We've had a little bit of conversation at the beginning in the budget process. We talked about what was being carried for budgetary contingency, and we talked about which contracts were still outstanding. Since that time, some have been settled. You may remember the police superiors from a couple of weeks ago. So now we are into, into this contract. And this is obviously, compared to the last one, it has seven employees, a much larger one, much larger impact. And we talked about, you know, concern that the financial sustainability of this may lead to layoffs or changes in staffing, simply because it cannot be sustained over a period of time. And the debate, you know, sort of went on from there. The finance director did tell us that between health insurance, if you consider the impact to health insurance here too, and the budget contingency, this would really utilize, really the full budget contingency. And that, that was a concern. I would say that the library carried its own contingency. So I'm not trying to get too esoteric, but there was some money in the library budget itself. So that's being discussed here too, because the library is part, at least some of the library employees are part of AFSMI. So in the end, after a robust debate, the committee did make a recommendation to approve two to one. I was the dissenting vote, and I hope I characterized it as best I could. Probably an hour of conversation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That was very good. Discussion?
Well, I'll jump into the pool here. I appreciate the work done in negotiating and appreciate the output from the wage study, et cetera, along the way. The result of that is everybody got a grade boost, one up along the way, which increases our calculation going forward. I mentioned earlier in the night that, you know, cost of living is actually between two and two and a half percent over the last 10 years. It'll be 2.5% for social security members with the idea that we've reached a soft landing, and we're going to get to a 2% or below over the next couple of years as well. This contract starts in, started in July 1st, which means they reap the benefit of a better economy from a pricing standpoint going forward, right? So just looking at the COLA at seven and a half percent, seven and a half percent increase over the three years strictly on COLA on that would have some additional buying power going forward. If I not, if I do it not with the steps and just have the increase plus the market rate adjustment, that's roughly a 12% increase over the three years versus a seven and a half percent increase. And that's all associated to market rate. And then when you get into the steps, what you really find is it's a 16% average, as they said, over the three years versus, again, seven and a half percent. But that would be factored with, with steps and all that stuff going forward. Long way around me rambling here is I can't support the contract with the steps in here. I think it's going to be a budget buster. And I think that the good work that was done here in negotiating, again, faith is going to result in less members here. And, and I just can't vote for that. Thank you.
Counselor Preston?
Yeah, thank you. So I too am not going to support this, and I want to explain why it is most certainly not because I think the, let me say this, I think the good men and women of DPS, well, of the AFSMI as a whole, really do deserve some, some increases. But at the same token, the city just cannot afford this. And, and I have to say that, you know, I, I have friends that are in this union, and I am certain they're not going to be very happy with me on this. But my loyalties have to be to the people of Newburyport and not to, you know, the, the people that I'm closest with that are in this particular union. And the problem is, you know, that these, these increases at four and a half and 5% are really, they are, I think, the counsel from Ward 5 said it, well, they are budget busters for us. And frankly, even more concerning is the downstream contract negotiations that we also have, most particularly with the teachers association. And, you know, we've, we've budgeted for 3% for the teachers association. We budgeted for 3% here. You know, four and a half and 5% is, it is going to kill the budget. And I want to be very clear that I will not say yes to a negotiation with a teachers union that would be in the four and a half and 5% range as well. So, you know, I, it's hard to say no to this because these are, these are really fine people. But at the end of the day, the people of Newburyport are fine people too, and the people of Newburyport can't afford this level of increase. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Lane?
I'm going to support this. I've always had the philosophy in business, you take care of your people first. Our, our budget is, is wild when you think about it. When you crunch the numbers and you figure we spent, over time, $19 million on a park, on four acres of lawn. We spent $19 million. If you include the cost for the garage and so on and so forth. I just, I'm beside myself tonight with how few, we are, how little we are valuing our, ourselves, our employees. But yet, in the same breath, we look at a, you know, a capital improvement plan of $156 million, and we're just like, yeah, we'll get to it. We'll, we'll figure that out somehow. We've got all these projects and spending crazy amounts of money on other things when we should be focusing on our people. So I'm going to support this. It's not their fault that we've overspent throughout time.
Thank you, Counselor Lane. Counselor Khan?
Yeah, thank you, Council President. I, I will be supporting this as well. I mean, I think we had a very good conversation. You know, we're not in the role of the negotiation. It's, it's interesting. The, is it the buck stops here? I don't even know if that's the right expression. But, you know, we are the ones that approve the transfers. So we do hold that last decision point, but then we're not the ones doing the negotiation. So we're in a, an interesting position where we, we kind of are, have to look at what was done, what was done in good faith by those that are, that, that really are in, in the room and that we have come to know and, and question in the philosophy when, when you're doing the negotiation of these contracts. We had, I think it was last month when we had the sergeants, the police sergeants, or the, the other union that came before us, which we approved. And, and when you look at the 87 employees here, and, and this is, I think, what the hard, hard part is in our role. We don't do all the contracts at once. We get them based on the groups that they're, that the different unions that are there. But the, the one thing, and I, and one of the things we asked is the grade changes. And I, I think what's probably, I think what's, what's happening is the, the market adjustment formula, that is new. And so I get my colleagues kind of, you know, looking at that saying, well, wait a second. You know, normally, we've seen the, every fiscal year, the COLA increase. Now we have this, what looks arbitrary percentage, 1.75, 1.25, 1.5. The, the market adjustment aspect was the piece that we questioned in committee a little bit about, you know, where is this coming from? What's, what's the, the factor behind this? And, and I probably can't articulate as better as maybe I'll ask some of the, the folks that, that understand this better, maybe to talk a little bit more about it so that the, the public can understand why are we seeing this factored in here? We talked a little bit. I think the chair did a good job in sharing the study that was done from an external entity to come here and look at the jobs. What are they taking? What's kind of the, what are the kind of going rates, should we say? But, so I would really welcome if, if maybe we could have either the human resources director maybe explain some of the pain points. And I think that's one of them, maybe to hear from your own words, about the market adjustment percentages. And then the other thing is the grade. You know, when someone has moved from one grade classification to another grade classification, that does bump them into another range. But why is that? And what value does that give at the end of the day, maybe in staffing, maybe not needing as many? And this is the part I can't answer, but I'll, I'll turn it on over to the human resources director.
Thank you. So the market adjustment was based on several factors, but some were the licenses, licenses that were required, the different demands for state and federal laws and regulations that we need to follow. So all the staff have to have classes and take care of all of that. We measured it against other municipalities our size, tourist kind of thing. And we didn't want to make our employees above average. We wanted to bring them at least to average. And when we went out there, this is what the study showed, based on the study Ethan and I worked together, what made sense for the budget, what we felt was fair to the employees, to bring them to where they should be with the demands that they need to maintain their licenses, they need to go to schooling in order to fulfill the state and federal regulations. So we felt that with that information, based on what we had, that this was fair.
And then about the grade jumps, there were 13 positions. Maybe, can you give a little kind of summary?
So the grade, the grade bump ups, if you will, were based on responsibility, et cetera. So the, the AFSMI union has a grade step six. They go up in twos. So six, eight, 10, 12. Based on the responsibility, to keep someone in that particular grade, we were never going to pay them fairly going forward, even if we gave them a market adjustment. So those are the ones with the classification that we decided to bump up a grade because then they will go along the way and be paid at the rate that's fair market value for them. Not above average, but to at least keep them at average. And hopefully, down the road, you're not going to have these big market adjustments again because we're, we're getting them close. And at least the COLA down the road will keep them where they should be.
And the last piece I want to also talk about, and we, and no, thank you so much. And part of it is retention. People remember, we had a lot of vacancies. We had a lot of jobs that were not filled. I'm telling you, we, we don't, we're not in the day-to-day for DPS for a lot of these positions here. But, but we do want to retain people. And I think that, that we're pretty serious about that for the services that we've come to expect. So I know it's not ideal, and I'm, I don't know if I'm going to convince anyone sitting here, but, but these are the reasons I am supporting this here. And definitely, administration, I think they hear us. We know, we, we all are, you know, we're on pins and needles here when we look at these, and we're wincing when we see these transfers. But you guys, this business, whether we call, you know, municipality work as a business, it does need to run. And, and unfortunately, we, we want to, like, level services. That's all we talk about. We want to just keep getting just level services. So, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Granis, then Counselor Zeeb?
Thank you. Just a quick question for the business finance chair. What happens if this fails? Does this go back to the negotiating table? And how does that work? And just one, one quick point, if I may. I am a member, I am a, a union member. We have been in negotiations for four years with my company. And you get what you pay for. And you want to retain a certain level of employees in town. You want happy employees. You want people who work their hardest for, for the city. So just stating that.
Thank you. And Counselor Zeeb or the director, yeah, what, what happens if this doesn't pass?
Yeah, we actually asked that question early on in committee. So this is all governed by MGL Chapter 150E, Section 7B, which requires that the council be sent the matters to fund the, the proposed union contract. Should it fail, it essentially sends the negotiating parties back to the table. And then they come back to us. As we know, this, this union has been out of contract since the beginning of FY '25, six months. There have been unions, private and public, that sometimes go for long periods. We've had them here. So it sends them back to the table, is the answer to your question.
Thank you.
May I keep the floor? Sure. Or did you? Okay, thank you. So one thing that, you know, it is an interesting conversation. It's a very difficult conversation because at the end of the day, my core is the taxpayer. So there's two things on a scale with the taxpayer. There's the services that are being provided and ensuring they can continue at a high quality, and there's the money. And that, that is a very numerical, objective sort of thing. And obviously, if you favor one of these too much, you can certainly have a challenge on the other side. If you overfavor services, you can be paying in an unsustainable rate and vice versa if you choose to short the money too much. I think you have to basically make a value judgment on this actual, these actual numbers. And what I really want to say is that if you are, were excited to get back into budget for FY, the next FY, you, you are actually in it right now. You're welcome to your first meeting about the next budget. I would actually say you're also in the FY '27 and '28 budgets as well. And so you're baking the cake. And there was a lot of consternation last year about the budget and the CIP, and I get that. But it's like every checkpoint we go along the way sets us on a slightly different or sometimes very different course. And then when we get somewhere different or our number of choices narrow in the future, to me, one of the most telling things was we had a budget contingency. We said we were going to try and hit and stay within this budget contingency. And in a recent separate matter, we had potential free cash allocations that may need to be made. And one of them was an increase to budget contingency. Why? Because we're no longer seeing that we're going to be able to likely close the outstanding contracts even within what is a very high budget contingency by historical standards. It started at $400,000, and you have the library contingency being carried separately. So my question is, where does the taxpayer come into this? And, you know, at what point do we say, okay, you know, this is what we're going to pay, and because we need to, and this is the services, and all those arguments? And in contrast, we're going to give up the following? And that obviously is a very difficult conversation. But I'm just telling you, you are baking the cake for the budget next year. This will have to be reflected into there. It will become a legal obligation of the city. And if you look at the numbers, I just don't see how that could reasonably be done. And as one counsel mentioned, there are other domino or cascade effects that financially will, will come together in, in a bit of a, I don't know what the right word is, big challenge. I'll just say that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Further discussion? All right, seeing none. So the transfer?
205.
205.
This is a motion approved, transfer 205.
We'll do a roll call on that.
Okay, roll call, starting with Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
No.
Counselor Preston?
No.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
No.
Counselor Zeeb?
No.
Counselor Donahue?
Yes.
Counselor Granis?
Yes.
Counselor Hahnem?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, motion, last one. Motion approve Order 640.
Second.
This is a gift acceptance from the Morals. This is an annual affair with the Morals. They are offering to the city as a gift, $180,000. And that $180,000 gift also has some sort of other things happening with it more broadly in the order. So first thing is they want to take the, the $40,000 they had previously allocated to the Atkins and Common and keep that. So that's not changing. They're really focusing their efforts on supporting the pump shed at the Borough at Mau. The, the pump shed is part of that much larger project to rehabilitate the Borough at Mau. A lot of conversation about the pump shed in the past. We'll not rehash that. So in order to try and get to a roughly total of $370,000 towards the pump shed, they're giving 180 of new money. They are taking $149,000 from the last year's allocation towards the granite seating, also at the Mau, but they're putting that towards the pump shed. And then they are also adding to that $47,000, which was, I guess, also for granite, granite seating. So basically, they're combining two prior gifts they made, allocated towards a specific purpose, reallocating it towards the pump shed, and then they're adding this year's. So of course, we are aware that at this point in time, the Mau project is not on a track to, to actually be completed, other than several efforts are being made to continue from the work that was done previously, most notably. And Kim Turner, the special projects manager, was present, that they're reapplying for grant in January and trying to close essentially the funding gaps that we saw. But I would just remind you that there was a CPA grant approved, then rescinded. So we're basically starting at zero. We asked if, if any work on the pump shed would be done absent the larger project, and the answer was, of course not. That doesn't make sense. So that is where it stands. The committee, I think, had a sentiment of thanking the, thanking them for the gift, of course, but with the understanding that their money, you know, code or would be idling for any unknown period of time. But if that was their wish, that it would just be essentially held in escrow until that is figured out. There's three to zero in committee.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion on the grant, gift? Any further discussion on the grant, gift acceptance, Order 640? Counselor McCauley?
Yeah, I can't accept this, knowing that we're just parking money somewhere for a project that could eventually happen. We have real needs for the city. The Morals have been very generous with us over time. But, you know, we now have $380,000 or so that's just being parked. And we all would like to see, probably would like to see that money actually active. So I'm just gonna say no. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Donahue.
Thank you. Yes, so I was really a big proponent of the Bartlett Mall restoration project. And I do see this as a big step forward in getting the funding gap met. I don't see it as sitting idle. I see this as a very specific plan that the Morale Foundation supports the project to this degree. And I think that should speak volumes for the importance of the project, that this foundation that is so generous with the city every year is so adamant about this particular project, more so that I think they understand the importance of it more than probably most of the council, and that's why it hasn't come to fruition yet. I don't think that there's any reason to tell them what they should be doing with their donations if it's a big project like this that the city really would benefit from. The Bartlett Mall is historic and long overdue to be cleaned up and is a serious blight in the center of our town. As much as it is beautiful, it's at this point more of one of those sad beauties that really needs this money. So, and the funding gap met. So that's why I'd be supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Donahue, any further discussion? Counsel Preston.
Yeah, thank you. So I have not traditionally been a big supporter of the Bartlett Mall project, not because I don't think it would be a wonderful thing to get done, but I think it definitely falls into the nice-to-have category for me as opposed to a need-to-have. I would certainly prefer to see something like, you know, $3.6 million spent on something like a youth services building done for the Bartlett Mall. And, well, this is, you know, the Morals' money, and the Morals should be able to do what they want with their money. It is aggravating to see money just sitting stagnant, not doing anything, especially as it relates to a project that, you know, may very well not ever get over the line to go to completion. So, you know, it's, well, I want to be very respectful of the Morals. They do a lot of really great work and have really done a lot of donating to the city for a very long time. I can't support putting money into an account that is sitting and doing nothing. So I'm gonna be a no on this. Thank you.
All right, any further discussion? Counselor Khan?
Yeah, not to belabor. I will be supporting this. I think maybe what folks are, I mean, I, you know, I'm gonna give you an example. You know, 149,000 towards granite seating, right? We just kind of talked about a union contract for our employees, our own stipends. You know, money, as we're realizing, is the big conversation today and the scarcity in trying to not overburden taxpayers. But what are the kind of flip sides that are some of the positives happening in our community that isn't taking away and doing anything for our taxpayers? And that's these kinds of charitable foundations that are giving to the community. And yes, it's sitting, it may not be going where people want it, but we have a commitment from someone that's been looking to beautify our city. Now, in terms of the amount and the, I would say, the logistics, I think these foundations, and I think, I'm not a finance person, and they left. But I do think that annually, you have to find and give a certain percentage. I think that's, there's some level of having to do that for foundations that do these donations. And so this is that action that they're doing. So, yeah, it may not be like, why is it not being used right away? Why is it sitting there? But it's growing because this is just a percentage they need to provide. And I'm glad they're coming, it's coming here. If we say no, I'm sure they might have a list of other communities that maybe some of their children live in. I don't know. You're shaking your head. Oh, there's no other communities but Newburyport. So we're really lucky that they love us this much. So if this is the process, and please, anyone could clarify me, but it just seems...
I would like to, I'd like to address that.
Okay, yes, please do.
So the mission of the Morale Foundation is very specific, and it's to the betterment of Newburyport.
So as I said, we are the chosen ones.
So there's nobody else.
Thank you. So we are the chosen ones to get their money. And like I said, I only know this because my mom has required minimum withdrawal, that she has to. And sometimes she gives me some of it, and sometimes another child who's nicer to her. But regardless, she has to give some, otherwise she pays taxes on it. And that's the little I know from just my little personal finances in my family. So for me, Morale Foundation, charitable, giving us this amount, yes, let's put it. We have a fund, we get this every year, and at some point, it will be used. I'm pretty sure about that. So I will be supporting this.
Counselor Zied, he may want to get in line for the, your modest point.
I was gonna say, this is the best holiday party I've been to so far this season. But on a more serious note, you know, I completely agree. The Morals are, they're being generous, they're giving, fortunately, somebody designated. I think the bigger thing is staff and what we spend staff time on. And it's 380 against a potentially four-plus-million-dollar project. And that's always the nature of the grants. So I do think by accepting this, we are tacitly saying, go keep chasing grants and work on this. And we know staff time is going into it. I just don't think it rises to the concern. When the project comes back in, it was already scrutinized pretty big, and it failed because it just simply could not come into, at the time, $3.7 million budget. And at that time, it was, I think, came in around four and a half. So I'm just saying on the floor, I don't know. I'm, my proclivity is not to support it going forward, but the gift, this is their offering, and maybe they need to see it come and go again, and that's the choice. So, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Harmon?
Thank you. Not to extend the holiday party further, but I just stand up and say, one of the allocated places for this is also Lower Atkins. And we're not simply talking about the Bartlett Mall. And I believe that over the length of the Morale Foundation's gifts, they have given to many projects around Newburyport. So don't want to relitigate the Mall. I do want to make sure that we have the funds set aside to do the multi-purpose court should we choose to move forward with that at Lower Atkins. And I would say thank you very much to the Morale Foundation.
Thank you. Counselor.
This is a great return meeting for me. I wish I stayed in my kitchen, to be honest. I'm not gonna accept this. This goes back to me and the whole parks debacle of a few years ago and the audit that was supposedly done and not done. So I don't necessarily trust any money that's coming out of them or the allocations that go to it. I would say that if we want to work on projects moving forward, we seem to be independently wealthy, and we should have no money funding any of these projects that we have moving forward. With that, I'm gonna be a no.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Lane. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none. Roll call.
Roll call on approving transfer one.
640.
640, that's what I know.
Order 640.
Yeah, order.
Order.
Order 640.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor Lane.
No.
Counselor McCauley.
No.
Counselor Preston.
No.
Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Counselor Wright.
Yes.
Counselor Zied.
Yes.
Counselor Donahue.
Yes.
Counselor Grantis.
Yes.
Counselor Harmon.
Yes.
Counsel President.
Yes.
Motion passes.
I just want to close the year by saying thank you to my colleagues. That's it for Budget and Finance for 2025. We met 48 times. We averaged 2.75 meetings per month, and we spent 48 hours and 19 minutes in committee meetings, according to our Zoom recordings. If you add in the prep time, the Q and A, the emails, the coordination, it's a lot of time. And I'm grateful to have some good committee members to work with so we can efficiently do this and really hoping to continue that and make improvements and work together in 2025. So thank you to you both, Counselors Khan and Harmon.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Budget and Finance, and Counselor Zied, Chair Zied. All right, so that brings us to General Government. And I'd like to make a motion to approve Order 638, City Council Meeting Schedule 2025.
Second.
Thank you for the second. I'll turn this over to Counselor Zied in a second. So what we have in the packet is the original order from November 25, which has our typical yearly scheduling cadence. Cadence is the word of the hour. And Counselor Zied made a proposal, which was discussed to change the schedule to, instead of basically a two, two meetings a month, second and fourth, second and last Mondays. I just go over my calendar, it tells me to go, but I think it's second and fourth or second and last, to go to every three weeks. And there is a paper schedule that has an every three week, starting on January 13. So there's been two General Government Committee meetings. It did not come out, it was voted to remove it from committee without a recommendation. Many of you were at both meetings. So a lot of discussion about, you know, does the proposed change to the three-week, you know, every three weeks, does that give committee, you know, the arguments made, gives committees more time to delve into issues, report back to the full council, time to line up the packet, and really focus on the committee work, give more time so there's not a rushed process to get to the full council. It does involve going from the current 22 meetings to 17 meetings. There was discussion of maybe an interim step there. But again, what I think will be made via amendment would be a motion to go to the three weeks and 17. And the Assistant City Clerk is handing out the calendar that's proposed. So with that, Counselor Zied, did you want to?
Yeah, I would like to make a motion to amend, to strike the schedule that is proposed and replace it with the document that you are now having in your hands. But there is one minor change on that paper, which is that Monday, 9/22, I'm told, is Rosh Hashanah. So Tuesday, that should be Tuesday, 9/23/25. But other than that, that is the motion.
Motion made by Counselor Zied.
Thank you.
Seconded by Counselor Harmon.
So if I could, just speak to the amendment very quickly. So I really, I think everybody's been in the committee meetings, and so I don't want to say everything. But there's really three main reasons to make, to try this. Number one is more time to work, and really specifically for committees and the clerk's office. So some have really good experience with this, some maybe don't touch it as much. But the absolute scramble that occurs after tonight, on a normal two-week cycle, to have a committee meeting for basically every committee that needs to meet, to process that, to produce minutes, for example, to collate all the amendments that were done, get everything together, package it up, get it over to the clerk, and then the time for the clerk to be able to process that into a packet, and then we're right back into it. And this, I call it sort of a vicious cycle, challenging cycle, continues. So more time to work, and that's for everybody. Committees, I think, hopefully can have a bit more time to breathe, to have an extra meeting in between two council meetings, and to hopefully bring out things that are really ready to come out and provide opportunity for good debate. So more time to work. Number two is more time to engage. I think it's been concerning for a lot of us to see less than robust engagement by the community, and that's a huge question by itself. But I personally think that the voluminous number of meetings that we have contributes to it. There's so much, it's hard to know which meetings to go to. We heard public comment about committees and the importance of committees. Counselors know, a lot of those nitty-gritty details are absolutely done in committee. They have been since I've been on the council. And when we try and do details on this floor, we get challenged and oftentimes tripped up. So it is well-suited for the environment, the culture, and the fit. And then a final one is, I think, more time for transparency. We're just like, you know, we're really, we're seeing some manifestations, like the late files and the rushing to put things in and the trying to workshop things through committee. I think having an extra week would provide some. Now, with that said, before I sit down, I absolutely want to acknowledge the very fair concerns that are around this. It is a departure from what we've been doing for a long time. Our change has risk. I think, you know, I'm hopeful this will go well. I think I've laid out the case for it. But, you know, there's no way you can mitigate the risk down to zero. But I will say that there's two things. One is the council schedule, as it is being done now, is always done by order of the city council, typically around this time or in January. So you're gonna do this in January 2027, or somebody will, whoever's on the council at that time. And then there's the backstop of the ordinance, which says Mondays, but allows the city council effectively to set its own schedule by order. I put in an ordinance on that tonight, just so that, you know, I'm keeping good faith with things going. But it's not meant to like, in January, we need to vote on permanently making this change. I look at this as a year-long experiment. And if it's a complete disaster, you guys can all egg me, and we can change it back to two meetings in July, and I will accept that. But I think favoring being bold here and trying something. The last thing is, I tried, I really did. I spent a lot of time the last two weeks mucking around with calendars and trying to think if there was a compromise that would, A, try and honor the cadence as best as possible so it's not every time it's a little different, and that throws people off and the public off. But also, once you go to three weeks, it's hard, because if you insert another meeting, you automatically have a week. Now you only have a week between a meeting, and that seems odd. And I would just remind you that at least to the schedule, I envision saying, we're gonna at least add one special meeting for the budget. We do, we have been doing that for five years, I think, with success. So we'll already be at 18. And as was mentioned, even though I don't think special meetings should be called, if there is a need to do so, the provision exists for that on relatively short order. And so I'm really hoping all these things together contribute to a positive culture change. It's not gonna reduce the work, but I think it could yield a positive environment and make everybody a little happier and the public a little more informed, and that would be good for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Zied.
Just a point of what are, St. Patrick's Day is the 17th holiday.
It's not a holiday.
Yeah, I checked this list against federal holidays.
It's only a holiday in Saffy.
Okay. Not a state holiday.
It's more important than Labor Day, I'll tell you right now.
Where we can go celebrate together.
There you go.
Further discussions? Counselor Khan?
Yeah, thank you. And I really want to thank the sponsor of, or the sponsor and the attempt of trying to, I guess, lessons learned as the Chair, probably one of the busiest of the two, Planning Development and Budget and Finance, both being very, very busy committees. And actually, Public Works and Safety and Community Service, actually, they all are, to be honest. And I think it partly is because of the consolidation we did of committees. General Government used to be really almost nothing going on. So all the committees are getting a lot of work, and I recognize that. I'll just say my reasons for opposing this. And it largely has to do with, I think, the commitment we make to the public as a... This is a very different forum. It's probably a little bit more formal. It's definitely televised. And I do think that there is an element of the public facing and seeing this body at work. And the elimination of five meetings from the year is a lot. And to me, largely, my opposition is around the fact of, that we have now, by taking out five of the council, formal council meetings, that I am really concerned about, you know, the public, the public-facing aspect of what we do as city councilors. And that's like we show up. And I know committee meetings are equally, and I know that's where a lot of the work is done. But, you know, amendments and bringing that work to the table here in a realm where people are more prone to watch us in committee meetings is a big piece as well. And there's nothing to be said about amendments and changes to our work being done here on this floor as well. And that has happened before. And many of us know that sometimes, whether something comes out or actually comes into a committee completely ready, hardly any amendments, versus when it comes out of a committee and gets further amended on this floor. That's just how the business is, based on the types of order or ordinances we're working on. What this schedule has done by taking out five of the council meetings as well is it has pushed a lot on this kind of gap between the committees working. We, and I'm not saying this for any reason, like how much each counselor will put in or what the chairs do. The chairs have a big role here in making sure the committees are functioning. And I can appreciate, as someone who, the only chair I was of was Education Committee, which was really hardly any work. It was really just bringing in the school committee and councilors. So I recognize that as chairs, many of you do need to be working on that timeline of the packet. But with that said, we have been able to do this and get things done in the past. When I first came on the council, things got done. Things got into the packet. And I'll say this, and those of you who have served with me in that time period have seen, we don't have as many late files as we do today. There's a lot of late files. I've not, never seen it be as many as we have. I've not, never seen it be as many as we have, and, and I'm not blaming anyone. I think part of it is, we are running against the clock all the time in our work. So, so to me, while I, I know many people, I think I might be the only dissenting voice on this, but for me, I don't think it's going to solve what I think is, is another issue, and that's really related to the assistance we have in the work we do, making sure the orders and ordinances we are introducing are fairly well-betted, whether it means talking to administration, talking to other councilors without exceeding what's open meeting laws. But I do think that there is going to be a combination of things that need to be done. If we want to be as streamlined, if we want to minimize the late files, it does not, this schedule change does not solve it. And I really do hope that we really try to understand what those issues are. So I will not support this. I do think taking five meetings out is going to have a ramification, and maybe I'll be proved wrong. So I know I'm one here who wants to just give this a try, and that's fair, but I will not be supporting this.
Thank you. Further discussion? Okay, hearing none. We'll do a roll call on the order as amended.
As amended. Okay. Ready, Mr. President?
Yes.
We are approving Order 638 as amended. Counselor Khan?
No.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zied?
Yes.
Counselor Dunne?
No.
Counselor Granis?
Yes.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Nothing further to report out of General Government. That would bring us to licenses and permits, well, Community Services.
I was really hopeful I wasn't right after Budget Finance with all, but we met 4,000 times, Doc. So yes, so we, again, we, we continue to have a clear docket with Community Services, but given that we did just make this change for the scheduling, I will work with my committee members to consider a schedule change for Community Services to coincide with that. So in the new year, we will hopefully be on a new schedule, but we'll work that through. All right, thank you.
Good. Thank you. Licenses and permits?
Yeah, thank you, Counsel President. We have just two things that came out of committee. The first is Application 236, so I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
So this is a request for a, for an A-frame sign. It's from Michael O'Rourke, and the location is at 148 State Street, number two. The, the committee had a lot of conversation with the applicant about exactly where the frame, A-frame is going to be located. There's conversation that it had been in the right-of-way previously, so there's assurances now that it won't be. And the, the, the location is a little unique in that the, the business that it's advertising is in the rear of the property, but the, the sign will only be there when, when there's someone actively in the, in the rear, in the, in the rear of the property, and they think it's only going to be two to three times a week at most. The business itself has a, has, has a location somewhere else, but they use the, they use this structure that's in the rear of the property to conduct meetings and do contract work with people that are signing up for their services. So it was recommended to come out of committee three to zero for approval.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Wright, any further discussion? Counselor Donahue?
Thank you, President. So normally, I am not a big fan of the A-frames. This one in particular was very concerning to me, as it is in an awkward part of my ward that is sort of that other end of State Street that's not a lot of businesses towards the Rotary. So very residential, and I had concerns, one being the placement, but I was pleased to find out that, yes, there's assurance that it will not be in the right-of-way, which is very important, because that stretch is not good as it is. But then it's also temporary. They're only planning to do this for, I believe, these had just a few months or so at best. So I am comfortable with this particular one that I initially was quite concerned about that.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Donahue, any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. So we could, Application?
Voice vote.
Voice vote.
Sure.
Application 236, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Okay, thank you.
So the next is, is a, an order that was sponsored by Counsel McCoy. This is in regard to Bar 25. For those of you who are not familiar with, with them, they, they're on the corner of Threadneedle Alley on State Street, and they, they have asked for permission to store their planters that they use to designate their outdoor dining space. They, they pay the same rate per square foot that everybody else does, but they don't actually have a parlet. They create their own space. So there's an, an expense for them if they were to move these heavy planters back and forth. So their plan is to do what they did last year, and is push the planters up against the edge of the building, keeping it on the sidewalk, but it'll be all the way up against the edge, so there'll be easy egress and ways for people to move around. Their previous approval was only for a year. This approval is also only for a year. There was discussions in committee that, that this probably isn't a, a great long-term solution, that we'll allow them to do it again for this year and reevaluate it next year. But we strongly encourage the, the owners to, to come up with a different plan, if possible, for, after this one-year approval ends. So again, this was, this was recommended to be approved three to zero with those stipulations out of committee.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion?
There was a second on that by?
Second.
Thank you.
Okay. Order, we could do a voice vote on this as well. So Order 644, Bar 25, request, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Great, thank you. Anything else to report? Counselor Wright?
There is a, there is an item that has remained in committee. It's the, the recommendation to make some changes to the block party legislation. After some brief discussion, we decided to keep it in committee. When the ordinance was presented, or the order was presented, we hadn't had the news yet of the departure, imminent departure of our current city clerk, and so we wanted to just let this percolate a little bit to see, perhaps leave it in there long enough to, to get the viewpoints of, of a, of a future replacement. So that's the, that's the plan for now, but that may change. And that's, that's all we have, thank you.
Thank you. Is that all playing out?
I'd also like to thank my, my team as well for their assistance. Counselor Lane, Counselor McCoy, thank you for.
It's my pleasure to serve under you.
Thank you. Thank you. Licenses and permits. Planning and Development?
Thank you, Counsel President. So I don't think anyone can come close to Budget Finance, but PND always does come in second. I think with the number of ordinances we did this year and the number of joint meetings we've had with the Planning Board, we had to have come close. But we had a lot of ordinances go through, and I too will thank my counselors, Counselor Preston and Counselor Wright, especially during the springtime. We don't have anything coming out tonight. We did finally get the last communication from the Planning Board on that final report for ADUs, so we will be meeting on January the 6th at 6:30 for our PND meeting to wrap up ADUs, and hopefully have our first vote on the 13th. And with that being said, that is it for PND. Thank you all.
Thank you. Counselor Shan? Counselor McCauley?
Thank you, Counsel President. Motion to approve Order 369.
Second.
So this is a continuation of us picking up private streets into our trash hauling contract. It's not costing us anything more to have them picked up. We're encouraging 50% plus to be on compost. Most are. The last one prior to this, everyone was, it was a great, it was a great win story for the sustainability team. This one, there's five, this three that are composting along the way. The paperwork is correct, their letter of indemnity, their insurance, et cetera, from the HOA is all intact. We voted three to zero to approve.
Okay, thank you. Further discussion? Hearing none. Just probably do a roll call on this.
Roll call on approving Order 639. Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zied?
Yes.
Counselor Dunne?
Yes.
Counselor Granis?
Yes.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to approve Order 624.
Second.
So this was the camera locations for the fire, new fire station and fire headquarters. I'll refer you page 126 of our packet. The last four are fire headquarters, rear entrance, apparatus floor, north and south and front entrance. They're live-streaming, they don't capture any, they don't collect any data or anything like that. They are not in compliance with state law in terms of capturing images, but will wait with bated breath for the policy coming from the administration that's due in like 11 days to us as part of that. And I'm sure they'll need an extension, and they should get a larger group together in terms of police and all of the active members going forward. I'll jump to the eight cameras located at Station 2 in Carter Station. We saw our design, obviously, I think the design was done by someone selling us cameras, because we have some conflicting and overlapping kind of pictures here. One in the back going forward, and another one in the back going forward. Would have taken out four of these cameras going forward. What you'll see in the pictures is a process we went through to remove abutters and public properties that were there that are not associated with the assets involved. So you will see a black banner over some of it, et cetera, along the way. So the committee, after some discussion, we had some abutters comments. I, I went by and showed the abutters, this themselves. We added some additional blacking out, you know, we don't want to see folks in their pool or getting into their cars, et cetera, along the way. I think this was inadvertent, but the ones that are important are the fisheye camera for the apparatus bay, apparatus bay, as well as the screenshots of the doors in and out, et cetera, going forward. There is, as part of that, the cost structure going forward for those that are included as well. We approved these three to zero to begin our next phase, to be able to get policy and implement the surveillance use, technology reports, et cetera, in the process. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. We can just do, we can do a voice vote on this, not that this is important, but I think that would be appropriate. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Okay, thank you.
Motion to approve Ordinance 188.
Second.
This is a change of off-street parking, limit off-street parking, corner of Merrimack and Carter Street. Merrimack Street on the south side of the street, from the point 20 feet west of Carter to a point 63 west of Carter, both sides just blocking off Merrimack, so folks on Carter Street can actually turn out. Carter Street also realizes that they're part of the problem, where folks are parking along the street a little too closely, so we've moved that back 60 feet south from Merrimack. Do so big.
Question.
Okay, let me go on.
Question.
60 feet from there. The ward counselor who sponsored it brought in abutters who, and residents who were fine with the plan, actually encouraging it. Most had off-street parking and realized that, you know, this was difficult to pull out, difficult to pull in, et cetera, along the way. This passed three to zero.
Okay, great.
And by the way, it was, it was, also had a joint meeting with DPS on site, who mapped out the site, like, sightlines accordingly.
Great, very narrow street right there. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. We'll do a roll call.
And the second was by? Thank you. Okay, approving 13-168. Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zied?
Yes.
Counselor Dunne?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion to approve Ordinance 189.
Second.
This is a handicap space on the corner of Market Street going north. It's on the east alley side, off the intersection, starting 20 feet, running 20 feet. This is kind of an outshoot of the safety measures we did. We took away parking in front of the building on High Street, which is by the former Hale School, Kelly School, excuse me, that was there, and so we need to accommodate a woman who was disabled, who now can park around the corner going forward, and not impose upon the handicap spot used for the playground going forward. So we thought it was a win. DPS walked, walked the site, able to put it in 20 feet off the curb and fit it in going forward. Should not, there's a sign there now that takes 40 feet away from parking on that corner, and they'll, so we're not actually losing any spots, we'll actually gain a spot there for the handicap spot, and this has a sunset date of 12/31/26. It was approved three to zero in the committee.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Counselor Donahue?
Thank you. Yes, as the sponsor of this, I just wanted to add that the resident is very grateful. She does have permanent disability, and she does own the condo where this will be in front of in the rear of 162 High Street, which is on the corner of Market and High. And yes, will alleviate any need for her to try to get nearby parking at the handicap spot for the playground across the street, and she does understand that this is not exclusively for her use, that it is certainly for use of anybody with a legal handicap plate or placard, and that is fine by her, so thank you.
Counsel President, that's all we have for this year. I too, I vote.
We got to vote on.
The last term we're going to vote on.
Aye.
No, we got to adjourn.
Any further discussion on, besides the motion to adjourn? Any further discussion on Ordinance 189? Okay, hearing none. We'll have roll call.
Roll call on approving 189. Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zied?
Yes.
Counselor Dunne?
Yes.
Counselor Granis?
Yes.
Counselor Harmon?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Counselor Wright?
Yes, again.
Counselor McCauley?
Thank you, Counsel President. I do want to say thank you to my committee members as well. We tough, we handled some very complex and difficult items. Sometimes they were contentious with the administration, et cetera, and through patience, perseverance, as well as the incredible amount of homework they've done prior to coming, has made running the meetings very enjoyable going forward. So I look forward to that going forward. Thank you.
Great, thank, thank you. I just want to mention a couple of things. I know everyone's dying to make the motion to adjourn. Everything that's in committee is rolling over. As Counselor Preston said earlier, we are in intact council, so that means we're all going to be here next year, so everything in committee, and it sounds like Planning and Development's already got a meeting for the 6th, so that, that's great, to keep things moving on. If you haven't had enough tonight with a couple of meetings, you can, you can go to one or two more tomorrow night. In regards to scheduling logistics, the clerk is extending his resignation by a period of time, so we will see him on January 13th.
Definitely?
So we don't have to say goodbye to you tonight. I hope it was okay to say that. And, yeah, I just want to thank you for the opportunity to serve as president. It was a very interesting year, I think, all around, as Counsel McCauley said. You know, sometimes with the administration contentious and sometimes within our own ranks, but, you know, just really, you know, continually blown away by the effort, intelligence, brain power, and time that you're all putting into these matters, because everything, you know, even though it might seem like a small thing, that really matters to somebody living on a street, or, or to a staff person trying to do their job, and the taxpayers certainly are always in our minds. So I appreciate all that you do, and, you know, we'll take a little bit of a break, and hopefully you all have a great Christmas, Hanukkah, and other holidays that you celebrate. And I know we all celebrate New Year's, so, you know, I'm sure we'll be seeing each other in between, but, but look forward to rest and relaxation. So with that, any other good of the order?
Motion to.
Sorry, I do want to say one thing. I'm so sorry. It would be remiss of me not to mention that the Executive Office of Housing and Eos.
Lovable Communities.
Yeah, Lovable Communities has, they've released their draft regulation clarification on ADUs, and there's a public comment period from December 20th that ends on January 10th. And the reason I call that out, I'll send everyone a web, a link to the site, but most notably, they're calling any bus route .5 mile radius around that is an exemption for parking. And that's kind of probably the biggest thing that they've noted. But in the webinars, which are recorded, they do say that public comment, they're looking to see and hear from the public.